Reszone this meeting. We will reszone with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now move into the consent agenda items. Item number, item letter E will, is being removed from the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to have three removed.
Three, okay. Um, we'll look at, you name C?
Yeah. It's, uh, two, uh, B.
B?
Yeah.
Okay. All righty. I will now proceed with the consent agenda items that have not been removed. Consent agenda item A, Terms of Office of ACS Commissioners. The Southfield Charter sets the parameters for city council appointments of three of street administrative civil service commissioners and one alternate administrative service commissioner. Recently, in going through the ACS appointments process for a new commissioner, we discovered that terms of office of the current commissioners do not appear to be consistent with the terms outlined in the city charter. At times over the years, when new commissioners were appointed to fill an uninspired term, a completely new six-year term was granted, rather than correctly filling the remainder of the vacant terms. To correct this situation with the approval by the Civil Service Commissioners, the city attorney, and the council board of commissions, with the council boards and commission subcommittee, we therefore recommend an approval of the resolution below. Whereas it is the intent of the city council to adjust the terms of four current administrative civil service commissioners listed below to align with the terms of office as intended by the city charter. Be it resolved that the term of office of Administrative Civil Service Commissioner L. Susan Manisto expire on April 20, 2019, and be it further resolved that the term of office of Administrative Civil Service Commissioner Ronald Miller expire on April 17, 2021, and be it further resolved that the term of office for Administrative Civil Service Commissioner Shirley Lightsey expire on April 15, 2023, and be it further resolved that the terms of office of the alternate Administrative Civil Service Commissioner Donna Sanders expire on January 21, 2022. Historically, I've indicated to our listening audience for you to, there's quite a bit included on these consent agenda items, and I want to just give the highlights and also the fiscal impact, if there is a fiscal impact. So I'm asking that our audience, you can tune into, I mean, go online to the city clerk's site and look up the city council agenda, and you can pull down our agenda for today, and this will list all the info that is a part of the backup for what I am reading and I'm going through, because I only cover, I will only cover the highlights. Consent agenda item C, Resolution Supporting House Bill 4986. Within the study portion of your, of our meeting this evening, the city council considered the request of the legislative committee to approve a resolution supporting House Bill 4986. That's the Michigan House Bill 4986. At such time, there was consensus of council to move the matter forward to a regular portion of the agenda this evening for approval. The bill would repeal the property tax exemption for disabled veterans who are homeowners, and in lieu of thereof, would establish a Michigan income tax credit equal to 100% of the property taxes paid by the disabled veteran. Thus, under the House bill, the funding obligation of providing a disabled veteran property tax credit would shift from local units of government to the state of Michigan. Accordingly, our city attorney will recommend the approval of the attached, of the resolution that I've just read. Consent agenda item D. This is Traffic Control Order Y-82-18 Yield Right-Away. The following traffic control order has been issued by the Southfield Traffic Engineering Department effective July 30, 2018. It is approved by the city council on July 30, 2018. It shall be, if it is approved by the city council of the city of Southfield on July 30, 2018, and become a permanent traffic control effective this date. At the following designated intersection within the city of Southfield, all drivers shall yield the right-of-way as designated. Yield right-of-way. Item 82-1 is southbound Lathriff yield to Dorset. Item 82-2, eastbound and westbound Dorset yield to Lathriff. Item 82.3, northbound Lathriff yields to Magnolia. Item 82.4, eastbound, westbound, eastbound and westbound Magnolia yields to Lathriff. This order become, becomes effective when the signs giving notice of the same have Approval of extension of the Northland listing agreement with the Friedman Brokerage Company. On May 22, 2017, city council approved into a commercial listing agreement with Friedman Brokerage Company relative to the Northland property. This agreement provides that Friedman will seek interested qualified buyers to purchase the Northland property or parcels therein, as well as provide marketing and consulting services. The agreement, the agreement was for one year, which expires July 31, 2018. Friedman has worked diligently to provide, on the proposal by PMV and Edward Rose regarding potential acquisitions of parcel of Northland property, and staff has recommended that the listing agreement with Friedman be extended. Staff is recommending that the, the current agreement be extended for a period not to exceed 60 days so as to assure continuation of the listing by Friedman. Consent agenda item G, Approval of Annual Maintenance Agreement with Bibelotha for the Library Self-Check and RFID System. I'm gonna spell this word, just in case we have someone in the audience trying to figure out what I'm saying. It is, it is a word unique to that industry, library industry, I believe, so the word is B-I-B-L-I-O-T-H-E-C-A for the Library Self-Check and RFID System. On September 22, 2014, council approved the library to install an RFID security system with self-check machines to allow patrons to borrow items themselves. The system was installed and has been in use for over one year. The first year of maintenance was included in the cost of installation, but ongoing maintenance requires that a contract be in place with the library for paying a fixed cost annually for general maintenance. On September 26, 2016, council approved a maintenance contract for this system. The contract for the coming year has been received and is ready for approval. The cost of, the fiscal impact of this, the cost of this maintenance contract is $18,338.79 for the period beginning 8/1/2018 through 7/31/2019. Funds are provided for this contract in the approved 2018-2019 Library Support Division contractual professional budget.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Manobon.
I'd like.
I'm not finishing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Consent agenda item H, Approval of the Purchase of Hardware, Software, Networking Components for the CDW Government. A little background, the library data information is the core background for all library technology. The original networking system has changed significantly since the initial installation in 2003, with major upgrades made in, to virtualized systems several years ago. Library staff and users constantly rely on their library computers to serve users in need of vital information to prepare material for public use and local information independently. A network is only as fast, secure, and reliable as what kind of, of what binds it together, a colon, a properly updated and maintained data system. The fiscal impact, the total cost of the proposed network infrastructure, hardware, software, maintenance, support, and component is $22,030.0. Sufficient funds are available for this purpose in the Library Technology Division Computer Services Contractual Professional and Operating Supplies account.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Ms. Mars.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A, C, D, E, I'm sorry, F, G, and H.
Support. It's been moved by Ms. Mars and supported by Mr. Fraser that we approve the items as mentioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We now go back to item number B. Item B is a resolution regarding the establishment of the Indigenous People Day. Within the study portion of our meeting this evening, the city council considered the request of the legislative committee to establish and proclaim the second Monday in October of each year as Indigenous People Day in the city of Southfield. At such time, there was a consensus of council to move this matter forward to the regular portion of the agenda this evening for approval. But Mr. Fakasi?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I wanted to know on the consensus, and I'll give you the reason why. I believe that the continuity of our actions should at least be those of cities in the area of southern Michigan, or even in the tri-county area. And to the people listening, it is a resolution regarding establishing of Indigenous Peoples' Day on Columbus Day. And, and so, I just feel that there has to be some continuity when we're changing the names of a federal holiday to, to get either a vote of the people, or to make sure that we don't have it on the same day, so recognition should be given to the national holiday that is picked out by Congress.
Mr. Manobon.
Um, just a question on the resolution. On the last page towards the bottom, you know, it says we'll recognize it on the second Monday and everything else. It says that it should be, the day shall be used to reflect upon ongoing struggles of indigenous people on this land and celebrate the thriving culture and value that they add to our city, state, and nation. My question is, besides for just adding it to our calendar, will there be any educational component that will do either from the city standpoint, the library standpoint, that actually reflects this change or this recognition that we're, we're doing? And if it was discussed earlier, I apologize.
I think that that would potentially follow from a council action establishing that, because the resolution that you're being asked to adopt does take that into consideration that there would be something. So I think if council were to pass the resolution, certainly that would maybe be looked at by both the library, maybe Parks and Rec, maybe there's some things that could be done to, to actually kind of further the objectives of the resolution.
Okay. Again, I don't, I don't, I don't see this being a problem. I know that Southfield's always, sometimes we're the last, sometimes we're the first, but I think that there's nothing wrong with being the first in the area to do something, something like this. So, thank you.
Council, all in favor of item B?
There are motions.
Well, first of all, we have to have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. President?
Mr. Fraser.
I move that we approve consent agenda item B, the establishment of Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Fraser, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve the resolution regarding the establishment of the Indigenous Peoples' Day. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Okay. The ayes have it. Okay. We will now move into the public hearing portion of our agenda.
Our only public hearing tonight is PSLU-18-0005, Special Use Request of Matthew Burke, Southfield HD Plaza, to establish a restaurant in a shopping center of less than four tenant spaces, property located at 29775 Southfield Road. You may recall that last year you did approve a site plan that had four tenant spaces in it. This was discussed at your July 9 COW. Apparently, one of the tenants would like to occupy two spaces, and one of the tenants is a restaurant. Now, ordinance does not allow a restaurant to be a tenant in less than four tenant spaces. Therefore, it requires special land use approval. So the site is located at 29775 Southfield Road. It's an out-purso Home Depot Plaza. This is the site plan that was previously approved. If you look at the, the shell of the building is already completed, and the main difference is that, and the two interiors, tenant spaces, the doors are gonna be removed and the tenant spaces are gonna be combined. This is a perspective showing the changes, both angles, the rear. That's, that, that photo was taken three weeks ago, and there's some landscaping upgrades as well. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Burke to just explain if there's anything he would like to add. Maybe you can talk about the tenants that are proposed to come in there.
Sure, thanks, Terry. My name is Matthew Burke with Southfield HD Plaza. Thank you for your time this evening. As Terry pretty much described, when we initially planned the development, we slated it for four units. As often happens, you don't necessarily know your tenants at the beginning and exactly who's gonna go in there as time progressed. We entered into a lease for the southern unit with Citizens Bank. We entered into a lease with National Coney Island for the northern unit, and we had two units remaining in the middle. Along came a new tenant mattress firm, which we're hopefully gonna enter into a lease with if we obtain the approvals this evening. But Mattress Firm needed more space than what was provided in, in just the, the two separate units, so we're looking to combine those two units. Weren't necessarily aware of the ordinance, but Terry and the staff brought it to our attention, so that's why we're here this evening, asking for your approval.
We do have to have a public hearing, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Okay. The public hearing is open? The public hearing is open. Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Manobon.
Um, we discussed this at the committee of hold, but this is something that the planning department in general is looking at possibly changing this weird requirement for whatever reason that the city had it, so there's really no concerns from your point of view.
Not at all. Actually, the required parking went down slightly based on the new tenancy. And as, as I had stated, during the site plan review, we were able to get Home Depot to agree to upgrading the entire frontage with landscape similar to what this parcel is. So we, we think this is, you know, relating to the market conditions, and that, you know, it's a nice project, and we will be addressing this in our zoning amendment to eliminating this provision specifically, maybe adding the special land use for drive-throughs.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fraser.
Um, question to the petitioner. Do the clients that you already have, does that fill a full building?
Yes, it will be 100% full of this.
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman?
Mr. Fakasi.
Can I ask, I understand National Coney is going in there?
Correct.
Uh, their signage is, is the standard that they use everywhere, isn't it? The National Coney?
I'm not, I'm not certain what, you know, all their different locations.
I was wondering how the signage on the other two would go, so that it would be compatible to, to.
Yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll have to apply for, for their sign application and follow the ordinance accordingly.
You know what I mean, Terry? They have a patented type of.
Right.
Name, which is big.
Sure.
I'm just wondering how the other two would be affected on it.
But we have a maximum size per sign.
Yeah.
And then we have a maximum for the entire frontage.
Yeah.
So they'll have to comply with that.
Yeah, but the project looks real good. Landscaping looks great also.
Thank you.
What is the proposed completion date?
The, the building's up. We're hoping to, to sort of do the finishing touches here over the next three, four weeks. Tenants, the, the Citizens Bank is under construction interior. National Corner is just getting started, and then Mattress Firm, if we're able to move forward, will, will follow shortly thereafter.
I didn't catch the last part, is it?
You know, Mattress Firm, the last tenant, if we're able to move forward after, after this evening, that'll follow shortly after.
Yeah, just through the chair, technically, they can't move that third tenant in without the special land use approval for the restaurant.
So are we looking at September, October, November, or what?
Well, it sounded like the end of August.
Are you saying for tenant openings, or for our, you know, finishing of the building shell? Ten, you know, each one will be, the answer's a little different, so we're, we're finishing our building shell and our satic occupancy over the, probably the next three or four weeks. I believe tenants will probably open, yeah, September, October-ish in that neighborhood.
Assuming they have.
So each, each tenant has a responsibility of building out the interior per our ordinance, so they could open at different times.
Okay.
But the overall shell and the site and the landscaping would get one certificate of occupancy, and then each individual tenant would get a separate one.
Okay, okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Fraser.
I move that we approve PSLU-18-0005 Special Use Request.
It's been moved by Mr. Fraser and supported by Mr. Fakasi, that we approve PSLU-18-005 Special Use Request. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? It is approved. Okay, we will now. Good luck.
Could you just give me a minute to close off, so I'm not disturbing your.
Okay, all right. Mm-hmm. This is for the number shit, yeah, with the, everything's over here. Landscape's done beautiful job. We are waiting on the screen to be moved, and it gets a little loud, so you can understand while we're waiting.
While we're waiting, can I make a quick public service announcement? Uh, there were some keys that were found on the floor in the men's room, so if anyone is missing some keys, please speak with, I guess, our city clerk or city administrator. I don't know who, who actually found them, but.
And you leave your keys up there?
No, it wasn't me.
Oh, our deputy administrator, John McCrean, has the keys if they may belong to you.
Harry.
Thanks.
In the communication portion, the first person to be recognized is Ms. Gerald. She's not here. The next person to be recognized is Mr. Mullin. He's not here. The next person to be recognized is Mr. Carl Miles. That's M-Y-L-E-S. He's not here. Next person to be recognized is Mr. Fred Bunker.
Fred Bunker, 24201 Garner Street. I'd like to apologize for my enthusiasm, for my own voice in the public hearing I spoke out at regarding the budget. And it was a mistake on my part, inasmuch as the sewers I spoke of were on J.L. Hudson Drive, when I addressed the additional expense I thought might be added to the cost of Northland so far. But a neighbor of mine got a letter from Mr. Seiver describing how he had called several people on Garner last fall. Uh, I made an offer to purchase their properties on behalf of the city. The offer was based on what city assessor believed was a fair price for the acreage. Unfortunately, owners countered with an extremely high price per acre. We're currently under a impasse with the county who wants us to install, and I hope the city planner would be here. We had rezoning of Garner, and I believe they have six 5.8 houses per acre now, and the county wanting us to install individually as single-family on two-acre lots seems a little premature to what the hopes for the city future, and ideally, the 12 acres being developed in plans we've had going back. And indeed, the planning commission, even in 2011, was looking into the possibility of rezoning commercial, that same property. So we're pretty wide open there with development. Unfortunately, since some of this information, the school is running full tilt all summer. They have a food program, the buses are continuing. We live on something like a service drive now. Big online orders to the Green Dolphin. There's no dead end. There's no enforcement of a dead end. There's no barricade at the street end. It only punishes the people who live on Garner, who have to go out on telegraph to go around the block, literally. Maybe a day timer of a dead end to stop school traffic. I think the boat was a little biased, and I don't think residents on Garner had a chance. It's becoming a delivery route for school supplies for children. Each car that brings a child has to drive by our homes twice. With the advent of this dead end, it quadrupled traffic. The buses started running today. I guess the school year is beginning because they were closed for the flooding and the millions it cost to fix the school again last winter. Thank you. I hope we keep Garner on the front page of development. Could bring in lots of tax revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person to be recognized is Mr. Metzer.
Hello, sir.
Oh, sir, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was here last week describing the telecommunications bill SB-637 promoting 5G technology which requires large numbers of local antennas spaced every several hundred feet. As a quick review, that bill will, will strip cities of local control and allow for the unregulated placement of many new utility poles, some holding equipment the size of small refrigerators mounted up high, or sometimes positioned on the ground in the easement close to a residence. The bill will constrain the city's ability to raise money through licensing agreements, and it sets unduly low lease fees and rates for use of right-of-ways and other city resources. Also, there is no compensation for the inevitable loss of cable revenue. and it sets unduly low lease fees and rates for use of right-of-ways and other city resources. Also, there is no compensation for the inevitable loss of cable revenue as digital traffic moves to 5G, nor is there any sharing of profits from the new infrastructure. The bill has passed the Michigan Senate and will be taken up this September in the House. It needs to be defeated and redesigned to better benefit cities. Though the Michigan Municipal League has forced improvements to the bill, it believes it still falls short. As a result, the MML does not support this bill. Lancing listens of cities make their opposition known. That's why I have suggested Southfield pass a resolution urging defeat of SB 637. I have attempted to make this easy by providing an example resolution from Ann Arbor along with that city's evaluation of the bill. I cannot imagine why Southfield would not do likewise. To do so costs nothing. I would think taxpayers and the city's administration are interested in preserving local control and in new ways of generating revenue. I know other cities are. I'll be working with them. Let me know if I can help Southfield and perhaps at this time, council members or staff have comments or questions. And I might start with Fred. Fred and I had an opportunity to briefly talk and I know he had some concern about the lost revenue as things move away from cable. Maybe you can at least confirm that as a reality? I'm open to anything, you know. I'm trying, I have nothing vested here. I'm not a businessman looking to make a buck off of this. I'm looking out for the city and really all cities. It's a Michigan matter. I get a little peeved when I see the ultra-rich telecoms, you know, trying to take advantage of the circumstances by kind of ram-rodding these self-serving bills through state legislators. And when they get a little pushback at the state level, they start working in DC, which they currently are doing right now. So I just think it's a good idea to pass a resolution. Doesn't guarantee anything, costs nothing, has no teeth, but quantity counts. So...
Thank you, Mr. Meltzer.
Can I...
No, so you made your statement and we've heard you. Okay.
Is that where it ends? Because I don't need to waste my time, you know? It's just that simple.
Yes, sir, that's where it ends. Mr. Frazier.
Well, sort of ends there. I promised you last week when you were here that we would take a look at it at the legislative committee, so, and we will.
Okay.
At our next committee meeting that comes up this month.
Do you know how to get ahold of me? I mean, at least my email's on...
Sure, I have your name.
On every, and every application to speak. Okay. I appreciate that. I'm just looking out for the city.
Sure.
You know, it's just that simple. Okay, well, thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
All right. Do you assume everyone did get a copy of that resolution and the analysis from the city? Because I can provide it...
We will run your, through the legislative committee. They will keep all of this informed.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Metzer. All right, no further communications. We will now deal with the council portion of the agenda.
Mr. President.
Mr. Frazier.
I move that we approve the travel expense report for Mr. Daniel Brightwell for the Michigan Political Leadership Program in Kalamazoo, Michigan.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Ms. Morris, that we approve the aforementioned travel expense report. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? It is approved.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Focassi.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to announce the passing of Gerald Jerry Lopez, M.D. And for those who don't know the name, he was the vice chairman of the Emergency Department of Providence Hospital in Southfield from 1968 through 1981. And he was actively involved in the paramedic training for the city of Southfield. Following his leaving Providence, he started the first urgent care centers in Michigan. We lost Dr. Radeski just a couple of months ago and now his partner, Dr. Lopez, he did a lot of work in behalf of the firemen and emergency facilities in the city of Southfield. And they both were very special people and provided what we now know today. Back then, it was medical services. Now it's, of course, emergency. And they've saved many, many lives. The first month that they started, they saved nine months, nine lives the first month of their starting up the program. It's going on and now today they have like 14,000 runs. And they're great people. The only thing I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Mandelbaum.
Thank you. I just wanted to let everyone know about a couple fun and entertaining items that are coming up in the city, and I'm going to try to do them in date order. But on Sunday, August 5th, from 11:00 to 5:00 p.m., we have Summer Veg Fest 2018 right here on the Civic Center front lawn. They're going to have healthier versions of summer food, live music, unique shopping and fun activities for kids. And you'll also be able to learn the benefits of a plant-based diet. So that will be, it's free admission and parking. That's Sunday, August 5th from 11:00 to 5:00. We also have our Family Fun and Safety Night. This is a new date because the last date was rained out. So that will be on Wednesday, August 8th from 5:00 to 9:00 on the front lawn. It's a great event for the families, for kids. There's going to be public safety demonstrations. There's a movie that will start in the evening. It's going to be a great time. On August 14th, here in the Southfield Pavilion from 12:00 to 6:00, the Red Cross is having a blood drive. I know that in the summer months, the Red Cross in general sees a dip in donations and they're always looking for those blood donations so they can help save lives. So again, that's August 14th from 12:00 to 6:00 here in the pavilion. I would have given blood, but I already gave blood and I don't qualify so quickly after. And then finally, on Wednesday, August 22nd, we have our Senior Appreciation Night at the Berg. It's for those who are 50 and above. From 5:30 to 8:00, it's a free event. There's live music, there's food, and it's a fun time for those who are 50 and above in the city. I know there's a lot more going on, but I will allow the mayor to talk about some of the other exciting events happening. Thank you very much, everyone, and have a good evening.
Seeing no other council activity, we will now move to the mayor.
First of all, I'd like to announce the passing and extend condolences to the family of Joanne Progar. Mrs. Progar, longtime resident of Southfield, worked many, many years in Southfield Public Schools, as a classroom assistant, and has been an active participant in our community. I would, continuing where Mr. Mandelbaum left off, we will have a month of, the month of August, will, the air will be filled with music. On the 10th and 11th, we have the Kimmy Horn Jazz Festival. This two-day event will feature Ms. Horn, who is the niece of the legendary Lena Horn. I believe one of the backup singers is going to be our own councilwoman, Tanya Morris. Seriously, correct?
That is correct.
I wanted to confirm that.
Your agent.
That'll be worth the price of admission, although the mission is free. Besides our backup singer on council, straight ahead will be there Ursula Walker, Penny Wells, Amy Lee, Jeanne Dunlap, Rayz Biggs and Kathy Cousins, as well as music director Al McKenzie. We have VIP parking on the city center lots and across the street. And the festival will also include a host of vendors, food trucks and a beer and wine tent sponsored by the Southfield Chamber of Commerce. Other music events this month, or the month of August, include Motown Memories featuring Motor City Playback from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. on August 16th. On the front lawn, we have the Randy Brock Group from 11:30 to 2:00 p.m. on the Eat to the Beat Concert on August 9th on Central Park Boulevard. And then at the Berg Park on August 7th, we have the Millionaires. That's from 7:00 to 8:30. Then the Rhythm Society Orchestra from 7:00 to 8:30 on the 14th. And then on the 21st, the Gabriel Brass Band. Also, the other important event this month is the primary election that will take place on August 7th. I certainly urge everyone to go out and exercise your right to vote. I do want to point out that one thing that is on the ballot is the Suburban Mobility Authority for Regional Transportation, otherwise known as SMART, is seeking a millage renewal. The, on this ballot, the millage renewal is for less than one mil. It's .9863 mils and it's for four years, 2018 to the 21st. The ballot language will say an increase, and it only says increase because legally it has to because the millage expired. So in effect, the SMART millage that was collected last December is, has expired, so this would put the SMART millage on the December tax bill. So that's why it says increase. And in Southfield, many of our residents and people who come to work here use the SMART system, as well as our senior residents. And SMART also connects to other regional transportation systems. So I wanted to draw attention to this, that, to make sure that you cast the ballot either way for or against the SMART millage, but it is on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Administration? Mr. Frazier.
I move that we appoint Director of Fiscal Services this evening, Mr. Austin Michaels.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Ms. Morris, that we approve the resolution of appointing Mr. Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? As have it. Mr. Michaels, welcome aboard and continue the good work.
Thank you very much. I would like to thank council for their continuing support. I would also like to acknowledge the wonderful staff that I have supporting me on the back end. I'm very much looking forward to the things that we're going to accomplish together.
We're counting on it.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Focassi.
And I just want to thank him for all the work that he does for the Finance Committee. I know he really brings a lot of stuff to the table and I appreciate it.
I too want to say congratulations, Austin. You've done a fabulous job since you've been here, a lot of good, efficient reporting. You make our jobs a lot easier, so congrats.
And I too would like to say thank you for everything, because I call on you and you always answer.
Yes.
I really enjoy...
I'm here.
I really enjoy the reporting that we're getting now and the explanations. You make everything so much easier. So again, I just want to say thank you and congratulations.
Well, Michael, Austin, I met you when you came on board. And I always tease you that your first day on the job, we fed you a lobster. There was an event that...
State of the City, yes.
State of the City, and we had a very fine catered meal that day. I think you're probably the only employee in history that show up on the first day and get lobster and salmon and free. So, I know I was chairman of the Finance Committee when you came on board and I appreciate your diligence. And I know we had some reporting and you followed up on that. And you and I worked together on the financial ratios that are, I'll be looking for as a tool and an item for the full council to constantly grasp the financial health of the city on an ongoing basis. So with Ms. Taylor and myself, I'll be looking forward to that. And I'm glad Mr. Zorn made the choice he made, so, and thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have one other item this evening. On July 10th, 2018, our city clerk received her MMC, which is a master's municipal clerk, the highest certification you can receive as a municipal clerk. She's one of only 61 in the state of Michigan to have this master's certification.
Woo! Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
I think the voters made a good choice in November. All right. The attorney?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay. Clerk?
Just want to talk about the election. We do have the election on August 7th. All of our 36 precincts will be open. The polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. If you don't know where you vote, you can give us a call or you can download the Project Vote Southfield app to figure that out. And please just remember to vote. Oftentimes, we do ignore primary elections, but primary elections are very, very important and we have regional, statewide and city issues on the ballot. We have precinct delegates, which is a city issue, and then the regional transit, which is directly is a city issue. And with the, to piggyback off what the mayor said, 70% of the riders are going to and from work on the SMART bus, so that's a large portion. And then I also want to congratulate Austin. It's been a pleasure being the clerk here for seven months. We've worked on a lot of things together and it's important that the clerk and the Director of Fiscal Services have a great relationship and we form that, so I'm very excited to continue to be working with you in the near future. Thank you.
Treasurer, the planner, the assessor, the engineer. We have nothing to schedule and we have no ordinances.
Closed session.
We have to go into closed session. This meeting is adjourned.
Well, we can do the vote now and then move to the other room.
Can I get a motion to go into closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we go into closed session.
Support.
It's been moved by Ms. Taylor, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum. Okay. We will have to have a roll call?
Roll call.
Roll call for closed session.
Focassi?
Yes.
Frazier?
Here.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes. Okay, we will now go into closed session in the council chambers.